Testing, 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 testing. One, two. I just don't want to be super loud, but it's not working now. There we go.
One minute. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, September 27, 2023, at 6:00 PM. I will now call the meeting to order and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of our Constitution, and to God in the name of the Lord.
Thank you very much. Allison, would you please give us a roll call, please?
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Monague.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Next on tonight's agenda will be a special presentation, a civilian life saving awards presentation by our fire chief, Chief Wooton. Is he here? Oh, he's okay. Want me to come down now?
Come down now? Sure, yes, please. Let me start by welcoming the mayor and the council back after the break. For those of you that I haven't met, my name is Shane Wooton and I'm fire chief of the Albany Fire Department. If I could, I would like Mr. Jeffrey Robinson, as well as his son Jeffrey Robinson, to come up with the mayor and I, please.
Can we use the microphone? This is recorded.
We actually have a new speaker system that is picking up my voice right now and projecting it out to the community. We upgraded on your break. Okay, so, actually, if it comes down right here, so people at home can actually see you. Let me start by saying, I'm not going to give exact details of where the Robinsons were fishing, because they said it's their honey hole, and I don't want to disclose that. So, I'll keep that to myself. But on June 13th, the Robinsons were in their boat on the Willamette River when they came upon an unclothed individual floating in the river yelling for help. The individual was confused, disorientated, and was bobbing in the water. Unbeknownst to them, the individual had been reported missing for the previous day or two. The Robinsons quickly acted and were able to approach the individual, got the individual a safety vest, and then into their boat. They called 911 and met the Albany Police Department and the Albany Fire Department at Bowman Park. The personnel on scene believe that your efforts that day directly saved that individual's life. And if it had not been for you, the individual would have surely drowned or succumbed to the elements. So on behalf of the Albany Fire Department and honestly, our entire community, thank you for helping the Fire Department achieve our mission to prevent and protect from harm. So.
Gentlemen, thank you both for protecting someone in our community and being selfless and will always be appreciated by the mayor's city council and everybody that lives in city of Albany. So, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Jeffrey?
Okay. And also, I want to give you a challenge card from the Albany Fire Department.
Thank you, sir.
And my sincere gratitude.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And your fishing hole.
Safe with you.
Safe.
Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Pleasure. Nice meeting you. Thank you again to the Robinson gentlemen for saving someone's life and being an excellent example of the care and love of citizens of Albany. Next on the agenda is a public hearing approval and approval of an agreement. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for the potential sale of real property, subject properties as Lynn County parcel 1115, 111S, 11S dash 03W dash 06CC, tax lots 01800, 02900, and 03600. For those who wish to testify, there'll be three options available, which were described in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:04 PM. Does the staff have a report? There you are.
Here I am. Good evening. Yes, just briefly, thank you. This is a public hearing for the potential sale of the three city-owned properties described in my memo. This hearing is not to evaluate uses or potential buyers. If the council adopts the resolution in front of you, it does not result in actual sale of one or more of these properties, but it allows council to take that action in the future if desired. These properties are currently primarily used as leased parking. If sold for redevelopment, there is the potential for impact on the downtown parking supply unless the development is required to address parking supply. Recognizing that successfully achieving revitalization goals will add to demands on parking supply, the city, Downtown Association, and consultants have been engaging in parking discussions. Developers will also be key players in developing solutions. Finally, allowing for the potential sale and redevelopment of these lots would be realizing the Central Albany revitalization area goals of leveraging private investment to increase the economic vitality of the area and encourage the use of vacant and underused property. Albany has been investing in this goal and striving in this direction for over 20 years. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Sophie.
Thank you.
Written materials submitted by the deadline were forwarded to the council. Written materials were submitted by Mike Hodge, email address MCS underscore Klein, K-L-E-I-N, and Susan Burnett. No one signed up to speak virtually. I'm going to now call upon those to speak in this room. No, it's just, it's light color. Well, she scratched out anyway. Lisa Grado, ADA, speaking neutral.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grado, the executive director of the Albany Downtown Association, and we're speaking neutrally on the sale of the property at this time. We are cautiously optimistic about the plans to develop the parking lots along Water Avenue. As Albany's main street, the Albany Downtown Association must stay aware of the positive and negative effects of any development in downtown Albany. A hotel and vibrant waterfront certainly puts a lot of check marks in the plus column. We have long wanted a lodging property downtown where visitors can stay and enjoy walking to our restaurants, shopping, and entertainment. We also need to be mindful of the current use of the parking lots and the impact of changing that use. Although we are optimistic a solution can be found, we want to share some possible implications. Customer parking. The JCPenney lot currently has 21 customer spaces, and after 4:00 PM and on weekends, the 145 lease spaces in the three Water Avenue lots also become available for public use. Losing these lots would impact evening restaurant customers, the Eagles, and Albany Civic Theater, Summer Sounds, and River Rhythm attendees, among others. It's also important to note that with the waterfront project redesign, the 21 lease spaces on Water Avenue will be eliminated, and there will be less parking at Montith Riverfront Park and the Riverfront Community Center. Leased parking. The loss of 45 additional leased parking spaces could negatively impact downtown in multiple ways. The individuals and businesses that lease the spaces would need to find parking on the street or elsewhere, which would affect our already tight street parking. Building owners may have occupancy issues if prospective business owners perceive a lack of parking and choose to locate their business elsewhere. Businesses may find it challenging to compete for employees who have options to work in areas of Albany with ample parking. Resident parking. We currently have dozens of apartments and lofts in downtown. Additional units are expected to come online in the next few months and years. Some residents lease parking spaces. Many also enjoy using the open leased parking in the evenings and for their guests. Building owners may face occupancy issues if tenants see a lack of parking as a deterrent to moving downtown. Parkwise provides leased parking, customer and resident permits, and patrol services. We coordinate event parking needs today for the Honor Flight, give visitors information and direction, and provide a watchful eye as caretakers of downtown Albany. We are assured that parking solutions will be part of any development plans, and the Albany Downtown Association will be actively involved in the process as stewards of downtown Albany. We look forward to working with the city of Albany to develop our downtown while maintaining the interests of downtown businesses, residents, customers, and visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have copies that I'll give and they'll be passed around.
City clerk, please. Next on tonight's agenda is Cameron Settlemeyer, speaking against the project. Three minutes, please.
Mayor, just a point of order. It's not the project that we're hearing about. This is the potential sale.
Potential sale of property, correct. Thank you.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany City Council, by the Albany City Council, that the city manager is authorized to execute all documents necessary to convey the properties to OB Companies Incorporated at the prices stated above and upon such other ancillary terms as he may deem appropriate. This authorizes the sale. This is not a started discussion. This gives the city manager the authority to make the sale. That needs to be clear. No option agreement terms are stated with this motion. This is a blank check to OB. There are no stated ancillary terms or requirements. This just gives OB the right to buy at a stated price, no strings attached. Seth Sherry worked on the project, then joins OB, and all this is behind closed-door meetings. The optics on this are extremely poor. Without conditions, OB can build three monoliths, eight-story-high edifices that not only take away parking from downtown employees, but do not provide parking for the hundreds of cars of the new residents. Where are the new residents going to park? In front of the businesses on First and Second? Then where are the customers and employees going to park? The motion tonight does not require any parking contingency. There is nothing about parking terms in the motion tonight. There is also no requirement that the development match the scale and character of historic downtown and can dominate the views as you drive into town. It could shatter the historic character of our downtown area by creating a modern 85-foot-high wall, tall wall of steel and glass between downtown and the waterfront. Nor is there any affordable housing requirement with the motion in front of you tonight. There is nothing but a blank check for an outside developer. These issues need to be addressed before selling the public land, not after. Please vote no until these issues are addressed.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed at 6:12 PM. Now it's time for council discussion. Would the council like to make a motion? The council will resume discussion first. The council, do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
There may be some staff rebuttal of some, or to address some of the comments.
Staff rebuttal?
Yeah.
It wasn't on here.
Sorry if that didn't make it on your guide. Yeah, and I think Peter might have a couple thoughts as well, but just, just one point of clarification. It's, it's not a blank check. The option agreement allows the city to work with a developer over the option period to, to develop the specifics of the project and reach a development agreement that's beneficial for all parties involved. So this would include things like public engagement, and any project would have to go through the same type of review process in a historic district to, to make sure that the, the project fit within the area. That being said, the, the public hearing right now is for you to determine whether you would like the option to sell this property in the future, not to discuss the specifics of any potential use.
Counsel, anybody else have something?
I just wanted to confirm. Is it in the, it's in the historic district? I just want that confirmation. Okay.
So it would have to go through?
Which, which historic district? Downtown's historic district? Okay.
So it would have to go through all the public reviews and everything else, and every other property down there has to go through?
Yep. Any development on this property would go through the city's standard review process.
And part of that engagement with parking research and everything?
Yep.
Does, does that mean it would also go through landmarks?
To Peter for that answer.
It does. I would invite Matthew Rutgers to comment if you like, but it does have to go through a review, all those reviews that are required when you, when you conduct a project like this in a historic district.
Question?
Matthew's coming up.
Yeah, I would just reiterate exactly what Peter said. This is, would work just like any other development in a historic district. It would have to go through a historic review, depending on the type or application type that could be all the way up through Landmarks Commission. So, yes.
Counsel Novak.
And just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, that includes the planning commission?
So depending on, well, there's two, those are two different things. So for the historic portion of it, it will go through a historic review, and depending on the type of proposal, and again, we're, to Sophie's point, we're, we're kind of delving into the actual development. This is really the hearing for the sale of the property, but when, when we're talking about if and when a developer, or those properties are developed, just like any property in a historic district, it will go through a historic review. And then depending on the land use or the use of the property, whether it be the type of use that's required, it'll fall into one of many categories or types of review. If it's a type one, one L, or type two review, that's an administrative decision. It's still reviewed for criteria in our development code. If it's a type three, usually conditional uses, those are the ones that would go into review by the planning commission. It really depends on, on the proposed use, which this is a sale of a property that we're talking about now and not.
Right.
I don't have that information.
Sorry to jump the gun. Thank you.
It's okay. This is, this is brand new for us, so thank you. And the other counsel, Counsel Kupczynski?
Just a, okay, just make a comment about the whole process?
Yes.
Okay. For the folks of you that are relatively new, if you go back to the inception of the Urban Renewal District, they had something called the Kaloots Plan. And from day one, one of the ultimate goals of the URD was to have a destination hotel combination on the riverfront down at the end of Broad Albin, which used to be called, we were trying to get it called the.
The Promenade.
Promenade, which was now verboten word, but that is now possibly, potentially coming to fruition. So I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Counsel Newton? Counsel McGee?
I have two things. One semi-related. Wanted to address, so I know in Corvallis, you aren't allowed to build anything that's higher than their courthouse. Do we have anything similar to that in our development code?
Correct. So in the HD zone, or any of our zones, there are maximum heights. The HD zone, I believe, is 85 feet. I'm going off of memory here, which, you know, the question would be, would that support an eight-story building? Likely not. More than likely, the highest you could probably build would be about five stories.
Okay.
That, Counsel Monague? Counsel Smith?
One more question.
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask staff, is there a benefit to entering this kind of agreement over letting the free market decide, placing the property on, on the market and allowing the highest bidder to win or something like that? Wanted to see if you could elaborate on, on that.
Counsel?
Yes.
So, so I know it's a subtle distinction that's hard to sometimes appreciate. This is a hearing about the potential sale of property. It's not about the project that, you will hear more about a proposed project later, but for the sake of argument or discussion, if that project never happens, you're still deciding tonight whether you want to make these three lots available for development. It's not deciding who or what, who's going to develop it or what's going to be developed on it. You'll have a chance to hear about that later, and it'll go through the review process. This is simply whether or not we can, we, the city, you, the council, would like to make those lots available for development.
I was just referencing 4B, the OB Option Agreement.
Run 4A.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we were going to combine all four.
No, we're going to go through, right in order. So, council's comment, go ahead, Counsel Novak.
Yeah. I have, I'm looking at the area, and it's not actually in the historic district according to what I'm seeing here.
It should be, I believe the properties are within the historic downtown or HD district. So it's, and we have four districts, the HD, Historic Downtown, Montith, Hackelman, and the airport.
Okay, so this is HD.
Correct.
Thank you.
HD.
So, would the council like to make a motion?
I'll do that. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the potential sale of real property located at 11S, 03W, 06CC, tax lots 01800, 02900, and 03600.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, next on tonight's agenda? That's not it. Oh, we're going to go to B now. So we're going to go to B. Do I need to read this preamble over again? Sean?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Do I need to read the preamble over again?
Ah, yes, please.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda is the approval, approval of an OB Option Agreement. Sophie Adams will be speaking with us this evening. This is, this is. These are out of order.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is not actually a public hearing. This is simply an approval of an agreement.
Okay. Because it was listed under there as B. That's why I asked. Okay. So it's not part of the public hearing?
Something.
Okay, it is not.
Close the other hearing.
So the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
So approval of option agreement. Sophie Adams will be bringing that to us.
Okay, thank you. So now the decision in front of you is if you'd like to enter into an option to purchase agreement with OB Companies for the properties listed there in your packet. In a moment, the OB team will come up here to talk about their company values, approach to projects, and their interest in Albany. But as I wrote in my memo, this opportunity is here now because of all of the visioning and investment this council and councils before you have put into downtown Albany over the years, and you should all be proud of that work. The key objective of downtown revitalization was to attract, attract private investment. We now have a beautiful and active downtown and the opportunity to partner with a respected and thoughtful company to build upon previous work and further the shared vision. During the option period, OB would engage with the community and stakeholders and develop a project that fits with the character of downtown. They will also be able to apply for a multi-unit property tax exemption program when it is established. This program is a recommended strategy in Albany's Housing Implementation Plan, which came about through the work of the Housing Affordability Task Force and can have broad positive impacts, not just in downtown, but across the city. As with any project, especially downtown, parking is an important factor, and a plan to accommodate new and existing demand is key for OB as well as the city. That's why we've already started down the path towards solutions, likely a multi-pronged approach. Again, I just want to emphasize that. Again, I just want to emphasize that opportunities like this are a direct result of the vision and determination of so many in downtown over the years. With that, I'd like to invite the O B team up to share more about themselves and their vision.
Thank you. There we go. Presentation. We still, we don't see the slideshow yet.
And Sophie, is it this?
This is slideshow? No, it's not.
It's not full screen.
Yeah, it's not full screen.
It's showing full on this computer though.
And, and on mine.
Not on mine? It's not present review?
No. Click on slideshow.
View.
Actually, let's just go.
Usually do is close it and then just do the slideshow and then share.
Yeah, here we go.
We may have to give you the big picture.
For the slideshow then share. There we go, this is better.
Hold on, hold on. Nope, still.
There it is. Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen, Matt Harrington. So Brian, as you're, as you're making your slides, if you want to hit that one to go there.
Okay, I might call on you, technology.
No problem.
So Mayor and the council and manager is wonderful to be here tonight. And I really appreciated Sophie's introduction. Like recall, I think it was over a year ago, must have been over a year ago, that we became convinced that you were serious about developing the riverfront. And I called the mayor and, and obviously his energy and enthusiasm was helpful for me and, and we pursued from there. Because it, without your work and without you've done and your, your, uh, I think, uh, rights to move this community forward and make decisions that are, that are hard to make. I mean, that's a very significant part of Albany on the river and downtown and has been for oh, how many years? And when we initially started bringing boats up to Albin, et cetera, to deliver the goods and services to Albany and Corvallis, Eugene. And so it's quite a history and we have a high regard and respect for that. And appreciate your efforts and, and really appreciate that you're bringing that back, that you're, you're creating something very worthwhile in this community. And frankly, that's how we want to spend our time, is doing things that are worthwhile and that are meaningful. And we think that we can go forward and do that and do it in a, in a partnership way with you, with the broader community in reaching out to the community and understanding the context. The eight floors, eighty-five feet, pretty highly unlikely, I guarantee you that. But the, uh, you know, the, uh, we got to, we got to work in context with the community, what the community can support and in partnership with the community. And that's why we're here, that's why we have the reputation we have and been able to do the things we have. So I don't think you, as partners, that you'll find us in lockstep. You will not find us getting ahead, getting out in front. We, uh, we're going to be here a long time. We're, we're legacy partners. We, we, we don't build, sell things, that's not what we're about. We're going to take responsibility and we understand parking, I think, as well as anybody. And, uh, that's the lifeblood of downtown and it, uh, the, uh, certainly a lifeblood of whatever we would gather, create there. But we, we got to, we have to be sensitive and certainly will together. I'm certain we'll be sensitive to that. The, um, in addition to your work and work over time in addition to the riverfront, the downtown attracts us here. Your, uh, we appreciate that you vetted us well in Eugene and come in Eugene and see what we've done there in, uh, in the market district. The market district is about small businesses and bakeries and galleries and, and you know, many, probably fifty, sixty, seventy different small businesses there. Downtown Albany as well. And that's, that's the attraction to us. That can be a wonderful place to live. It can be a wonderful place for people to visit. And so that, that is attractive. It is a riverfront, but it's also downtown. We've got to connect to the downtown and will. Now, the slide, the one slide you have in front of you, I think is just representative of some of the work we've done, whether from Eugene to Boise, Idaho, the, or one there. I think it's a six-story, uh, is that correct, Katie? A six-story, uh,
Correct.
Hotel, Katie and I built that together. He do, he was doing the heavy lifting and, and, uh, I'm not sure where, what role I was, but I was there a lot.
You did a lot, yeah.
And you get a chance to talk with Katie and with Irene Alltucker. Katie is vice president, grandson of family business. Irene is, is family for sure. And as vice president of the company and responsible for real estate on residential. And in our case, we have housing, we have retail, we have, also we have, uh, a district, what we call district offices, which is shared office, those type of things. It's all Irene's responsibility. Because who knows how this might fold out down there? We, we know we've got to do, build in conjunction with downtown, not in competition to downtown. It's making it stronger and working better. And we know that the resident, residential will help that in great activity. And Irene will speak to that. But these, these pictures you see in front of us are our work. We, it's me, work I think we're proud of because it's meaningful, made a difference in those communities and that's what we want to do and we will do. I don't know, along with you. Let me go to the next one, in case you're not too far. And that's, you know, we, we do want to build premier destinations. I mean, that's who we are. I won't go to the small language here. We got to be proud, all of us got to be proud of what, what happens down there. And, and, and we want to be proud of what we do. Our unique is our special. We spend a lot of time on the detail. Some people often will get tired of us asking questions and talking about their opinions and, and how we might do a better job. What does the river mean? Was, was there a landing? Where was that landing? All those kinds of things. How do we represent that in this development? And the people that are going to live there. It, it, you know, it, it's not about building, it's about living and, and what goes on there. And certainly relating, relating to Albany, the local, the community, local business, et cetera. That's who we are, that's, that's what we're all about. And then we'll go to the next one. Uh, we have this picture in here, I wanted you to see that not everybody's as old as me, but everybody's about half as old as me. But we have, uh, we have quite, this is our leadership group. We have about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five employees. And that group has made things happen and will make things happen. They'll all be involved, from, from marketing to real estate, to building, to hotels. We've got right front of the hotels there, accounting, finance, et cetera. It will require financial partners. The project that we're looking at is, uh, who knows, somewhere between fifty and a hundred million dollars without question over time. That will happen. Certainly we will, later, uh, months or two, whenever you're ready, we're talking about property tax exemption, but that only goes for ten years. And, and those property tax dollars do come and accrue to the community. Very important that they do. And, but this group is experienced and, and excited and energized about doing something worthwhile. And of course, that's, that's yours. And we just want to hang on to this. This is, what you're doing there is so significant and people living across from there, I mean, somehow, whether it be, uh, retail or, or eating there, participating, it's a, it's a big deal. It is, uh, quite a thing that you've done. And what we're going to do is try to enhance that. We're going to put an explanation point on that and, and, uh, work with that. It is wonderful. Now, um, this you're more familiar with than I am, although I will tell you, we spent a lot of time over the last six months on, on that riverfront and down to the merry-go-round and all throughout the, the community and walked, I'm sure, every street more than once and certainly down the river as well. And then I think the next slide, I believe, uh, I'm going to turn this over to Katie to talk about some of the work we have done because it will relate to our future and I'll certainly be good answering questions later on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian, and, and thank you again to everyone for having us here to speak about this opportunity. So the first project that I'll talk to you about is really where it all started for us about forty-seven years ago, so before I was a part of everything that was happening. My earliest memories here are running around, playing arcade games at Wonderland and going up to the fourth floor to see if I could catch, catch grandpa in his office. The Fifth Street Public Market, for a long time in downtown Eugene, has really been a gathering point. The unique thing about the Fifth Street Public Market, it's really about a third locally-based retail, a third office space and a third restaurant eatery. So there's a lot of different things going on that bring people down on a regular basis. It's grown over the years. We have over forty tenants in the neighborhood and five hundred thousand square feet of leasable space. This has been operating, like I said, for forty-seven years. And as we began studying more of the impact that was going on here and as the shift of regional malls and things changed and people were looking more for specialty boutique and experiential experiences, we, we were researching a famous hotel in Seattle called The End of the Market. As part of that study, we realized the positive impact a hotel can have on establishment like for the Fifth Street Public Market. And that's when we went underway with our first hospitality project. And that's what you see in front of you now is The End of the Fifth. So we opened this in two thousand twelve. It's a seventy-room boutique hotel. And this is where we really did discover that we had a passion for hospitality. We enjoyed taking care of people. We enjoyed the experiences that we're able to create with them. And really, we enjoyed helping the community put their best foot forward. That was one of the things that we did experience in Eugene is that we became the place where they started housing people than when they wanted to impress them with the community, attract recruits, bring people down. We were a place that's able to host and create those opportunities. One of the things that the, End of the Fifth has had as far as an impact on the market that's been extremely positive. In the industry, it's a studied and well-understood and proven rate that hotel guests spend the equivalent of their room rate in the local economy every day. And so we've seen that in the impact in the market, on the tenants and in the community as well as not only seeing the market grow as more of a destination, as local hub for all types of activities, whether it be orchestra performances, festivals, Market Fest is a big downtown celebration we have. The End of the Fifth was really one of the things that allowed us to step into that. The End of the Fifth, after we opened it shortly, was awarded by TripAdvisor in the top twenty-five country hotels across the country. And so that's competing with hotels on the beaches of Maui or in the mountains in Colorado. And to receive that recognition on a small boutique hotel, we really started to understand we were doing something right. We wanted to do more of that. This experience at the End of the Fifth led us to look for other markets that had similar attributes. And that led us to Boise, Idaho, similar-sized college town. It was growing fast. And we built this hotel in Boise. We worked a lot with the community there to identify what they were looking for, the type of hotel they wanted to see. This has more of a European feel and it plays off of landmarks that are in Boise, not anything at all that we would be proposing for downtown Albany. But it's an example of the different things that we can do. This is a hundred and twenty-seven-room hotel and is, is the leading hotel in downtown Boise currently, ranked number one by TripAdvisor in Boise. Right after Boise, and actually we were working on this at the same time, was the expansion of the market. So that Fifth Street Public Market I showed you in the first slide, this is directly across the street from the market. For a long time, we saw how that mixed-use aspect of the market, where we had the, you know, third restaurant, third offices and, um, third retail, really bring a lot of destination. When we, when we added the hotel, we saw that boost tremendously. So why don't we do more of this? What else can we add? This expansion across the street, you can see on the right, the Gordon Lofts, that's a hundred and twenty-seven-unit apartment building. The building on the left called the Market Building, that's done in a brick aesthetic with some historical feels and archways and things that definitely don't give it necessarily the modern feel. That's where we have Nike as well as our district coworking offices. It's something else that we also added that brings more people to the site. The Gordon Hotel that you see in the rear there with the rooftop sign, that's an eighty-room boutique hotel, again, that has plentiful meeting space and has become a community gathering point. This destination in conjunction with the Fifth Street Public Market has really been, uh, become a hub for activity in downtown Eugene. And so basically, uh, as part of this as well, the thing I'm missing is we did add a shared street in between the two to add connectivity between the market. And we also created this covered alley you see in between there. And this is a result, again, with our long work with the community and things that they wanted to see. And part of this alley, we were able to create a Makers Row, which is really small retail spaces that are sized for locals to be able to take on. And we've got those all filled up today with either a baby boutique shop, a small barber, an ice cream and waffle space, all local companies that now have an opportunity to have a space in downtown Eugene at a very affordable rate based on the size of the development. I think the other thing that's important for us to point out in this development is we took a lot of extra care and time in the planning so that it did have certain historical attributes that spoke to the neighborhood. I'm on the board of the Oregon Historical Society. Brian was on the board of the Oregon Historical Society before me. Maintaining history and recognizing the history around us is a value that we have personally and that we have as a company. And I can assure you that part of our process will be making sure that we develop the buildings on the waterfront to reflect the great work you guys have done in this community as far as historical preservation of your downtown. And that is actually one of the things that has really attracted us to this community. We have a saying in our group about the market that we want it to be Disneyland fresh. We want it to be clean, we want it to feel like Disneyland. And when we came down and have toured your Main Street down here multiple times, second right off of the river there, you can't help but feel some of that Main Street USA vibrancy. And we only want to add to that. We will definitely be taking great care to make sure that we have historical context with our buildings that fits the neighborhood. And like Brian said, we don't see an eight, seven-story building being part of that, even six. It's likely it's a five, four, it's got to fit into the context of the, of the downtown. And that will of course be a result of all the market studies we do, the work with the community to find out what their true needs and values are. The district office, this is a look at, look at the coworking space that we created, a hundred and fifty-five desks, these are on the top two floors of that Market Building. And this has really infused a lot of vibrant activity into our neighborhood. So it's a, a number of offices that people can rent on a monthly, annual basis or even daily basis. And it gives a lot of people options of different ways to use the space. The Gordon Hotel is the hotel that I showed you there. Gordon O B was my great-grandfather, Brian's dad. He was an artist, a world traveler. We named this hotel after him and he's the guy that we're helping use to tell the story of the Eugene art scene. And I think it's, it's also important for us to point out, any hotel we build here in Albany would reflect Albany and Albany's art scene. We'd be working with locals to make sure that they are represented in the hotel. We'd be using local contractors as much as possible. I'm born and raised in Eugene. It's important to us that the work we do benefits our area as much as possible. That's a value we have. And with this, I'd like to turn it over to our vice president of real estate, Irene Alltucker, to talk a little bit about the process of tenant mix, also programming onsite and some of the things we do to help make the property really energize as much as possible.
Good evening and thank you for having us here tonight. It's such an honor and a pleasure to be able to introduce ourselves to you and the Albany community. I think that's what our purpose here is today because many of us will have read about O B companies, but not quite understand what does it mean to, for us to come and be and begin to be active in Albany. And we have a vision of what will happen on this property, but that is just, right now, very visionary. So when I joined the company, this corner that you're looking at right now was a gravel parking lot. That's all it was. And there was a vision of what could be there. But it took a long time to go from the vision to create what is here today. And when we were in that process, throughout the process, we took every opportunity to ask the community what they were interested in seeing. What type of retailer? What would you like to have there? What's the feeling? How would you like to activate the space? So it was definitely not done in a vacuum. And we also, when we look at creating a place for retail spaces or for people to gather, communities to gather, we ask for community input, and we look at how people interact. So we think about how different retailers might complement each other. Where is there a place for people to sit on a bench and visit with their family? Or have a meeting out in the public area spaces? So we look at all different ways of what this space would be within the community. And it's looking at how do we enhance what's already being done here? It's not about coming in and saying, oh, you know, well, we're going to change it. It's how do we enhance it and build upon it? It is so exciting to see now, when you're in this neighborhood, this neighborhood has changed since this development has happened, but it's changed because now there are school buses picking up children in this neighborhood. We could hardly believe it. And that was a hope, a vision, that that would happen. And then to actually see that come about, to see people walking their dogs, for people to come down and have this be a representation of what is Eugene because of the Makers Row. They are artists there. Casey mentioned that the Gordon Hotel has the Gordon name on it, and it's iconic for being an artist's place to show off local artists. And we did a call out to local artists to submit pieces of art. If you could see the north side of the Gordon Loft Apartments, there are five murals. I'm very proud of those murals because they were just community-done. We asked people if they would like to have a mural, and they painted it on a piece of plywood. And one of those was done by a thirteen-year-old girl. And she has a mural on this building that's there and bright and wonderful, and people have their photo taken as a part of it. So it's about creating a place for people to spend time, enjoy afternoons, and be able to live, be able to visit, and be able to have an incredible positive economic impact. Casey mentioned the shared street. This is a good view of that shared street. And so there's bikes and pedestrians and cars that all are able to occupy the street very well and very cohesively. So it's just amazing to see how it's developed. And it was definitely not done in a vacuum. It was done with a lot of listening, a lot of requests for input, so that in the end, it's a project that we can be proud of, but the community can be very proud of it. And that's our goal, is at the end, that the community looks at this as a place to highlight.
Thank you, Irene. We've probably done enough talking. We've taken your entire evening here, and we appreciate that. We could spend a lot of time continuing. This was county property, not unlike what we're talking about here tonight. It was on this particular development, in a gravel lot, as Irene pointed out. Now, we've got forty-two dogs that live in that building and a couple of little kids, and there's going to be more children that live there. And so we're just, you know, activity creates activity. And that's what we're about. We're very positive for downtown Albany and the community. People will be coming on our weekends, I guarantee you, down to the waterfront, and this being part of the whole, not just the whole thing because the park is so important. What's one? Not from us. Do I have to answer any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Counsel Kaptinski.
Wonderful PowerPoint. May we get a copy of that to share?
Absolutely. Would the counsel like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing, oops, the wrong resolution, the resolution that I can't access on my computer because it timed out on me for the option. Whoever has it in front of them, please carry on.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing staff to execute an option to purchase agreement with Obi Companies, Inc.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, Brian. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Irene.
Casey has two small, one that also will be party.
But I also understand it's somebody's birthday. Happy birthday, Brian.
I've had a few of those. But you know, what you did tonight, what you did to that park, I was on a friend and counselor, I appreciate you making it. Make no little class. They have no magic, disturbance, blood, and probably themselves will not be relied.
I agree.
Big plan.
Hundred percent. Thank you for being as happy as you are.
That's what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on tonight's agenda, proclamation. I'll only read two proclamations, and the rest will be entered into the record. First, it's Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated officially since nineteen sixty-eight, and whereas we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to show our gratitude for achievements, inspiration, and services of our Hispanic and Latino community, provide every day, they provide every day, and whereas Hispanic and Latino individuals help drive our small business economy as workers, business owners, and entrepreneurs, enrich our academic environments as teachers, professors, and engineers, participate in the good governance and betterment of our society, and to ensure our health and community as nurses, doctors, caretakers, and childcare workers. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Albany, Oregon. And I call upon our residents and governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to cherish and celebrate the Hispanic and Latino community. Now, in witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed on this twenty-seventh day of September, twenty twenty-three. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas bullying is an aggressive use of power, targeting another person or group of people with repeated unwanted words and/or actions hurting them emotionally and physically, or... Whereas bullying includes actions such as making threats, spreading rumors, attacking someone physically or verbally, and excluding someone from a group on purpose. And whereas while most reported bullying happens in a school setting, a significant percentage of school-age bullying also happens in places like the playground, on the bus, in the neighborhood, and on the internet. And whereas targets of bullying are at an increased risk of depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding on the bus, going to school, interacting online, and attending community activities. And whereas more U.S. high school students who identify as LGBTQ are bullied and cyberbullied, or they stay home due to safety concerns, and they're straight and cisgendered peers. Whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, and whereas children who are witness bullying often feel less safe, helpless to stop it, and intimidated. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim October twenty-three to twenty twenty-three as Bullying Prevention Month in the City of Albany, Oregon. And I call upon parents, caregivers, teachers, and schools to adopt trauma-informed approach and play an important role preventing, addressing bullying and its harmful effects. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed on the twenty-seventh day of September, twenty twenty-three. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. Next, on tonight's agenda, tonight's agenda. Also, in the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation will be signed and put into the record. Number six on the agenda is special presentation. One of my favorite people in the City of Albany, Oregon, Emma Dean, will be talking about Chance this evening.
Everyone, thank you for having us. I'm going to have John Phelps, our Shelter Director, join us.
I might be calling Matt up to help with IT.
Yes, please. Thanks.
Yeah. Just try.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Emma Dean, the Executive Director of Chance. Like I mentioned, this is John. So we are serving Lynn Benton and Lincoln County. I've got our mission up there, which is being blocked right now. So our mission is to assist individuals in our community that have mental health and/or substance use-related issues and who are seeking recovery to effectively implement positive change within their life. Chance provides support, guidance, and necessary resources.
Could you bring the mic a little closer?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
How's that?
Perfect.
All right. So our Albany office is located downtown, and we're open Monday through Friday, nine to five. We're providing peer support in that space to anyone in our community. We're serving up to seventy-five people a day coming into that space, looking for services. We utilize our building as a warming and cooling center year-round. Every night, our building is used for a support group, and over the weekends, different support groups come in for our community. We have adult education services that we provide, and we also hold a peer support specialist training every three months. So I just want to kind of go over what peer support is. Peer support is a staff member on our team that has lived life experience with houselessness, addiction, mental health. And so they're able to come along our peers and support them. And we do that by transporting individuals to and from detox treatment, mental health appointments, medical appointments, and obtaining needed medications to be stabilized. We work a lot with other agencies within our community, and we will always do our best to do a warm handoff of that individual to another agency. And we always want to be on the other side, waiting for that person. If they're released from detox, we want to catch that person and get them to the next safe place with wraparound care and support. We connect individuals to needed resources within our community, and we help them navigate those resources. We help people obtain needed documents, birth certificates, IDs, things like that. We work on resume building, job interviewing skills, and job searching. And we also help with shelter and housing search. So one of the things, new things we've recently started is being able to provide essential services like access to laundry and showers in our downtown location. I heard a peer walk through our building this week and say, it has been three months since I've had a shower. And we are providing up to twenty-two showers a day for individuals in our community that don't have access to that, and up to, so far, I think, thirteen loads of laundry for people. And one of the ways that, like, one, we want to provide these items for people, blankets, clothes, things like that, hygiene items. But we also want to be able to wash and dry things so we're not constantly handing out new things and potentially adding to garbage buildup within our city. So we're excited, especially as we move into the wet season, to be able to wash and dry things and give that back to the individual in need. We're also working to battle food insecurities. We're serving breakfast and lunch downtown, Monday through Friday. Currently, we're serving a sack lunch. This is our new kitchen space that you can see. And our staff will be in there at the beginning of October, and we'll be serving hot meals, breakfast and lunch, to everyone. We want to keep bellies full and provide that essential nourishment for people. I also think food is a great way to connect with people, to sit down and share a meal, and to check in with how someone is doing. We partner with Lynn Benton Food Share, Meals on Wheels, cleaners, and grocery outlet to obtain food to serve to our community. That top picture is a space within our downtown location, set up as a dental clinic that is running every Monday, nine to three, where our peers can come in and have access to dental care. And we will also be partnering with Care Hub to have a family practitioner in that space once a month. Something we're seeing within our community of individuals struggling with houselessness, mental health, and substance use disorder, is it's difficult to access those appointments and that care. And so we want to make that as accessible as possible for people. So one of my most favorite things that we get to do out in the world is go out on community outreach. So Second Chance and our office staff goes out to Marvin's Garden multiple times a week. When we're there, we're giving out food, water, we're handing out Narcan. And we are also showing up with garbage bags and working with the individuals in that space to do a quick walkthrough and a cleanup of the space. We want to encourage that social responsibility. And something we've seen is when we show up, people start grabbing garbage bags, offering to help, and working to keep that space clean. We've been able to go into parks where we have overdose reports and hand out Narcan and offer detox and treatment and rides if needed. We get to partner with our local law enforcement to go out to camps to offer support and resources. And it's a beautiful partnership where we get to go out and do that together and work as a team to support people. We're able to partner with Cote and go out to camps and parks. And something I want to add is we strive to work with each recipient and each individual to improve their housing, recovery, and become independent, not, here's a quick fix. Right now, your stomach is full, you have a jacket. We want to meet those essential needs, but we also want to say, what's the next step for you? How do we get you healthy and whole and transitioning? So our Second Chance Shelter is located right across the street from our Lynn County Jail. We have twenty warming and cooling center spots in a low-barrier setting. That means in order to come in for the night and to be safe and dry, you do not have to be clean and sober. You just need to be able to remain safe. And we will be expanding that space to forty-two overnight beds, hopefully by the end of this year. We have five family dorms where we can house families as a whole and wrap them up with support to transition. We have twenty-eight female beds and forty-six male beds, all in a dorm setting, which is a high-barrier, clean-and-sober setting.
Could you define high barrier for the council, please?
Yeah. So high barrier for us is that you're clean and sober and in recovery, if that is something that you've struggled with. You're not coming in intoxicated or under the influence. Our low-barrier setting is you can come in however you are, whatever is happening. So we're gonna do as much as we can to support that individual and de-escalate and and work to keep them in shelter. But there are times, even in that low barrier setting, you have to ask someone to leave. So services provided at our shelter, obviously safe shelter, three meals a day, showers, laundry and like we talked about earlier, that peer support. Second Chance partners with Care Hub through Samaritan Services. We're working on a five-room respite building, which will allow individuals that are experiencing houselessness, that are going through chemo, dialysis, have a surgery coming up, to get inside into a safe place to rest and heal while they're receiving that medical attention and they'll have a social worker and will work closely with the hospital for those individuals. We also partner with Lynn County Mental Health and have four beds that they contract, which means they can call us and say, hey, we have a person and they will bring them. We will go pick them up. John was at the hospital last night. What time?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock at night, picking up an individual to bring him into shelter that was at the hospital, to go into one of those Lynn County Mental Health beds. And then we're working to add two more Lynn County Mental Health beds for Project Yellow Line, which is a diversion program. So somebody's out having police interaction, but they don't need that level. They can call us and we'll get them into shelter. Our shelter also has a crisis team, which is running twenty-four seven, year-round. Local law enforcement can call us and we will go out to wherever they are in Albany and respond with peer support and shelter. We again love this partnership and work really closely with our law enforcement to provide a solution for each individual. So like I said, we're serving in Lynn Benton and Lincoln County. We have drop-in centers in Albany, Lebanon, Corvallis and Newport, a recovery home for women with children in Lebanon. In Lynn and Benton Counties, we have a hotel voucher program with wraparound support. We're not just gonna stick you there, we're gonna wrap you up with support and get you to the next spot. So in Lynn County, we served over two hundred individuals in that Lynn County Hotel Program from eleven of twenty-two to nine of twenty-three. In Lynn and Benton County, we have transitional housing programs for families. So one whole family can go into a house and stay there with wraparound support. And then we're transitioning out of that space and bringing in a new family that's in need of housing. We also have in Lynn and Benton County Rental Assistance. We provided rental assistance to five hundred and fourteen different individuals and/or families from nine of twenty-two to nine of twenty-three in Lynn County alone and our shelter. Just wanna talk about community real quick. I love our community. I've served in a lot of different communities and this is my favorite place to serve. I love our city and county staff and officials, our first responders, fire department, police department, our other service providers, volunteers, staff and the people we serve make it all possible for us to show up for our community. So a couple of our current projects and needs are to further remodel our shelter, to add additional beds, family dorms and laundry facilities. You can imagine the amount of laundry we are doing in that space and we're seeing a huge increase of families in all over experiencing homelessness or at risk of losing their home. Funds for vehicle repair and move, moving them as needed. A lot of people are using vehicles as shelter. Housing for individuals with sex offense charges, experiencing houselessness, to help provide stability and to ensure public safety. To rebuild the steeple on our historic church building, which is what that picture is right there, and more transitional housing. Ways that people can get involved is to volunteer, donate funds and/or requested items. Our community has been so kind to us and it enables us to care for those we serve by donating. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, you have any questions or comments for the Director?
I do have one question. A few slides ago, you mentioned that you work with Samaritan to help people with medical needs and I'm wondering how the situation with Samaritan is impacting your ability to do that.
We have had a great working relationship with Care Hub and Samaritan, where they're sending people our way that really work for the services we're able to provide and to provide that care for them in a safe space. We see there are times that people come to us that that we can't care for and we have to go back and work with the hospital or staff. And Anita Earl and her team have been really great with supporting us and taking care of really vulnerable individuals in our community.
So from your response, I take it there's no negative impact with their?
No, not not while we've worked with Care Hub. That's been really positive.
Well, councilors?
If someone needs transportation to the low barrier shelter, is that something that you guys are able to provide?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good to know. Thanks.
We do.
I would like to say that I have called Chance and Second Chance several times since being on city council and your staff has been wonderful. I just can't tell you enough how much I appreciate the work you guys are doing and I know it's hard, but you're doing it and we appreciate that. And so keep it up. If you ever need me to come out and talk with folks or any of the city council, just let us know and we'll come out and visit with you.
Thank you. I think we both feel honored to do the work that we get to do.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Emma. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. We did that one already. Is a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG twenty twenty-two annual report and community and community needs. Let's call the public hearing open at seven ten PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, I'm going to just share a short presentation on the annual report and then we'll turn it over to any comments.
Okay. Who are you?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'm Beth Brilander and I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. And we're gonna see if we go three for three on. Oh, first try. All right. So thank you for having me. I'm gonna be sharing about our annual report, which details what was accomplished during the twenty-two to twenty-three program year using the Community Development Block Grant So first, I'll just highlight that the goal of the Community Development Block Grant is really to benefit low and moderate income Albany residents and more specifically with housing, public services and economic opportunities. So in the twenty twenty-two program year, which is twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, I, on the slide, you'll see our different goals that were in our plan, our action plan and what activities we did that we funded that advanced those goals. So the first goal we had was reducing homelessness. And so how serendipitous that we just heard from Chance. But we had allocated funds to Chance in the previous year to repair their HVAC system and they had remaining funds they were they were able to use to complete some additional repairs on their facilities. And as a result, two hundred and seven individuals had access to higher quality shelter. And then I'll also highlight that Jackson Street Youth Services provided shelter for thirty-four youth in Albany using their CDVG funds. And so the next goal was to preserve our affordable housing and we funded Dev Northwest, who operates a low-income homeowner rehab program and they completed four housing rehab projects. And there are two that started and are underway and will be completed this year. And then we also had provided funds to Creating Housing Coalition for their tiny home village. They expended those funds on the parts of that project that were eligible for Community Development Block Grant funds and the actual housing units will be completed, we anticipate, in this year. So unfortunately, we didn't get to include in our report that the housing units were complete, but the funding was spent and the housing will be completed imminently. And then in terms of some of the public service funds, with Family Tree Relief Nursery See Funds and they were able to serve sixty-six individuals with the variety of services that they provide, supporting low-income households and households that have other risk factors or vulnerabilities. And then the Senior Companion Program through Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments helped thirty low-income seniors with services that allow them to really stay in their home and not have to move to a higher level of care. So that's a great program. And they actually were at our last CDC meeting, a representative from the COG came and expressed the gratitude that they have for the funding that they received to be able to provide that program in Albany. So I know that it's highly valued. And then the Center Against Rape and Domestic Violence served nine individuals that were fleeing abusive situations and provided them emergency shelter. And then also, we were able to provide funding to, again, Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments to provide small business loans and they dedicated those loans specifically to in-home childcare providers because we know that that's a big need in Albany. And so that those grants allowed those childcare providers to expand services and also to just keep their business running because the profit margins on those are very slim and they need support to be able to continue to offer that necessary service in Albany. And I just also wanted to highlight that they did a great job reaching out to the Spanish-speaking community and two of the business owners were Spanish speakers. So that also broadens who has access to childcare because of course, as a parent, if you are not speaking the language of your childcare provider, there's a huge barrier there in accessing services. So I also just wanted to highlight the demographics of who was served this year with CDVG funds. And I just will note that we actually, in terms of percentage, doubled the amount of Hispanic or Latino people that were served using CDVG funds this year. So I think it's closer to what our population looks like. So I thought that was just a great move that we know that these funds are able to serve all of Albany residents that might need them, not not all, but equitably. So I apologize for the small text. I did my best to make it as big as I could on the screen. This is a version of the table that's in the CAPR report on the page three. And because this is the last year of this five-year span, I wanted to just highlight overall, what have we done in that five-year span? And I especially wanted to note that when you're creating the plan, we know it's really difficult to project what do we think we'll be able to do. But we really did accomplish a lot of what we set out to do and overachieved in a number of areas. The one area that we didn't overachieve in was the Home Buyer Assistance Program and that was really due to home costs, that it just wasn't possible to have the amount of funding needed to help people have the financial assistance that they needed to buy a home. But otherwise, I feel like if you look through that table, you'll see that we they're nearly met a goal, we exceeded a goal and certainly the the CARES Act funding helped us expand our impact as well. And so going forward, we're, you know, we're doing agency consultations, so we're reaching out to agencies that serve the people in Albany that we know that CDVG funds could help to see what the needs are. And we're also welcoming any comment from or input from the public on what they wanna see prioritized going into the twenty twenty-four action plan. But that concludes my presentation on the annual report and I welcome any comments or questions.
Council, is there any? Thank you so much, Beth, for your report. I enjoyed it. Is any council, Councilor Mottig?
Yeah, so on page thirty-eight of our packet, you're talking about citizen participation plan requiring a minimum fifteen-day notice and then you kind of talk about where you're providing those notices. I'm wondering if you provided a notice in Spanish at that at the library?
Before you answer that, I need to I need to close the public hearing.
Oh.
Okay, that's my fault, not yours.
We haven't had testimony yet.
Oh, we haven't had testimony, okay. Go ahead, nobody, no one signed up to speak, so.
Oh, okay. Well, there might be somebody in the audience.
Does any, well, let's do that first then. So anybody that in here?
Sorry, I jumped again.
And the council ready, ready to testify? Saying none? Okay, no, I will declare the public hearing closed at seven eighteen PM. Councilor Mottig?
I don't believe we had it in Spanish, but all of the public notices offer the option to have any of the materials translated and so that information is provided. But that's a great feedback that we want to do that in the future.
We have actually, I mean, since this rolls back a little bit, you know, back, we have actually had some documents translated into Spanish and several of our program documents into Spanish so that they're accessible to everyone.
You know, the counselor? Well, I would like to say this, as a member of that committee that puts those makes those recommendations to counsel, I'm totally taken aback by the level of detail paid by the people on the commission and the work that you your staff, you and your staff do. I leave that meeting feeling better about the day because you're sharing information, you're helping us make better decisions and I think it's wonderful and I hope you continue. And and I'll let the board know as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would the council like to make a motion? There's no reason to make a motion on this. Why would it? There's no reason to make a motion on that. It was a public hearing. For information, okay? There's no reason to make a motion. Next on tonight's agenda is approval agreements, intergovernmental agreement with the intercommunity health plans. Chief Shane Wooton, Fire Chief Shane Wooton.
All right. Good evening again. So I'm gonna do my very best to briefly describe where we have been and where we are at and where we are going so you make a fully informed decision today on the intergovernmental agreement for you. So let me start by saying, okay, so you have the Oregon Health Authority and as the Oregon Health Authority goes to implement the Oregon Health Plan or Medicaid, they've created CCOs to to implement that plan. And each county has a specific CCO. For Lynn, Benton and Lincoln County, the CCO provider is Samaritan Health.
What does CCO mean?
The CCO is, and I can't believe I'm freezing on this because I've got, thank you.
Community Care Organization?
Community Care, yes, Community Care Organization. I have like been through this a hundred times. I can't believe I just froze. Okay, so the CCO, they, in two thousand and sixteen, they reached out to us and asked if we would be willing to partner with them to create a community paramedic position. They funded the position for three years, at which time, when that funding expired, we converted an existing deputy fire marshal position over or the funding for that position towards the community paramedic. Our community paramedic is Hillary Cosmiki. It's been her mission to try to keep people out of the back of the ambulance, that if someone needs healthcare that can be served somewhere other than the emergency room, she tries to intervene. Well, because of those relationships that we had established, Samaritan Health reached out to us and asked if we'd be willing to partner with them again to to enter and implement what is called the FUSE model, Frequent User System Engagement. So the FUSE model is where they've identified individuals who frequently use the emergency room services with the focus on those that are recently released from being incarcerated and the unhoused. And so what will happen is we will get those names and those individuals and we will try to go to engage them and get them the proper healthcare that they need without having to call nine-one-one and end up in the emergency room, end up in the ICU. And so we're really excited that with those relationships that they reached out to us and not other departments in the area to see if we would be willing to do that. The funding from the IGA will go to help support our current community paramedic position as well as we'll be adding point five FTE funded through this grant to help implement this model. It's a two-year grant and like with all grants, we'll continue to engage with them. We'll see how we do on meeting the benchmarks that are set and, you know, the continuation of the program. as well as we'll be adding point-five FTE funded through this grant to help implement this model. It's a two-year grant, and like with all grants, we'll continue to engage with them. We'll see how we do on meeting the benchmarks that are set, and, you know, the continuation of the program is to be determined. We'll see if this is, this program's successful. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Counsel? Counsel Ramonigui's first up.
So what I read in the packet, you said that the program has been in place since 2016. Do we know how many individuals annually this program serves?
Okay, so I don't have the number right off the top, the exact number right off the top of my head. But I can tell you, in previous years, Community Paramedic Cosmiki reaches out to about four hundred referrals.
Okay.
But a lot of those referrals not only come from different healthcare providers, they also come from our crews. If they get into a, somebody's home where it looks like they're unable to care for themselves, she'll go, our crews will let her know, and she'll then go and engage the individuals that are living there, as well as the family members, to try to get the help that they need.
So do we have metrics on reduced 911 calls?
We don't have, we don't have that matrix, because that one's so darn tough.
Yeah.
Because you're trying to track how many times something didn't happen, and that's difficult.
Other counselors have anything? Counsel Smith?
I have a comment. I think this, for one thing, the community paramedic program is one of the best things we do. I, I just can't speak highly enough of that and of, and of Hillary in that position. She's terrific. She saves lives every day. I think, I wanted to comment that that program, combined with the many programs that receive Community Development Block grant money and community partners like Chance, show how the Albany community works together to help people that don't have what some of us have. And that, that's something that makes Albany really special and makes life here worth living for recipients, for those who give, for those who offer the services and provide them. So I would like to move to adopt the resolution on page fifty, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with intercommunity health networks, coordinated care organization to continue a community paramedic program.
Second.
Wow. There's some enthusiasm.
He wants to second that one.
So any further discussion? I'd just like to share one thing before we vote. When I travel and represent Albany or I'm just somewhere doing my business, I brag about your fire department all the time, your staff, the way you execute things. And it's an honor to be the mayor of a city with such a fine fire department, and the work you guys do is fantastic. So thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, chief.
If I could, thank you very much for those comments. And a lot of what we do is because you support us the way you do. So without your support, we couldn't do a lot of this work, and none of this work would, would happen if it weren't for the AFD team. With Hillary Cosmiki, Kyle Romi, we have an amazing team that have developed relationships throughout our community, and clearly, relationships open doors, and, and they're great examples of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. I'm not used to seeing pink ink on a piece of paper. So next is business from the public. There was no written, no written comments submitted?
I put pigs. Did I?
It's pink. I can't, it's barely readable. So next, please, tell us who you are.
Teresa Bolland.
Thank you, Teresa Bolland.
And I'm really nervous.
Oh, you know what? So are we.
I'm really nervous, and I'm a crier.
No problem at all.
Anyway, I'm here to save my pet pigs.
Okay.
It's against city ordinance, and I understand in Lebanon, Carvalis, they're allowed. Anyways, so I, God, I can't even see now.
Okay.
I am here today not only as a resident, but as a devoted caregiver. In my...
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
This is why the child is mad. Okay, so I'm here today as a resident of Albany, my devoted care, but I have a devoted caretaker and advocate for two innocent beings, have, who have graced my life at my home for the last six years. But these beings are, are my two cherished pet pigs, Hazel and Harper. Today, their futures hang in the balance due to Syria, single malicious complaint. I implore you to hear my plea on the behalf. First and foremost, it is critical to clarify the proof that these are my pets, not livestock. My pet, my beloved pigs, enduringly termed mini pigs, have been, have never been in the capacity of livestock. We refer to them as the ladies. These pigs have been loyal companions and have bonded with, and that might have, have a bond that might share, but be shared like a treasured cat or dog. They have been raised with love and compassion in our beds for two years, for the first two years of their lives. The emotional death capacity of a pig is vastly underestimated. Like, like humans, they have feelings and emotions, not just their own, not of their own kind, to their human and their families. I, I think that taking them from their sights, smells, and routines is prob, is, and providing them comfort is not only going to be deeply depressing for them, but vastly devastating and traumatic. These pigs have been safely contained within our property for the last six years and never caused a threat, disruption, or anything like that, of that kind in my neighborhood. Their area is a twelve-hundred-square-foot pen in our backyard and is bigger than the house that I raised my children in. They do sleep in the house. They have their own bedroom. I can vouch for that. They sleep inside the house. They have their own bedroom, and they do, we do our best to keep their, their bedding as clean as possible. I've also done my research and know that they are both able to be in the city limits of Carvalis and Lebanon. I would love to see Albany change their ordinance. I urge you to review this with an open heart, compassion, and empathy, as they have a family bond. I know this is very untraditional, but it's our normal, so please, don't let this one isolated event determine their future.
Thank you very much.
I brought with you all theirs. I've got neighbors who wrote all letters. I have a petition going around.
If you can give it to the city clerk, she can make a copy of it for us.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's stick to the chair. Son, come here. Come on, baby.
Don't bump, don't bump your head. Don't bump it. Oh, oh.
Oh, you're gonna see the old man walk. Come on, baby. Go get hammy. Oh, God.
Okay, so he's bumped his head before, so he's, he's got to practice.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I love having children in the chamber, so thank you for bringing them.
I mean...
That one doesn't want to leave.
I'm a grandpa, so I really just, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're most welcome.
He lives in the house of pigs, just so you know.
Okay. Next up is Director Grotto.
That's gonna be a tough act, yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough act to follow there.
Yeah. So Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association, a quick downtown update. The newsletter came out in early September. You should have received it electronically, but there are a few things I wanted to highlight. One was, we're excited about the new stage taking shape down at Montithew River Park. We hosted our Excellence in Downtown Albany Awards, so I'll share very quickly on that. That was on Monday, September eighteenth. Community partners and members celebrated extraordinary individuals and businesses at our 2023 Excellence in Downtown Albany Awards. Wanted to appreciate the city's support, and especially those who attended, Mayor Alex Johnson II, Counselor Steph Newton, Ramese A. McGee, Jackie Montague, and Marilyn Smith, as well as City Manager Peter Trudson, Economic Development, sorry, Economic, that's all in the wrong order, Matthew Rutgers, Community Development Director, Economic Development Manager Sophie Adams, and City of Albany Communications and Engagement Officer Matt Harrington. And the winners are, for those who weren't there or haven't read it, Restaurant of the Year, Boz Vietnamese Comfort Food, Retail Business of the Year, Red's Boutique, Professional Service Business of the Year, Veritone Architecture, Personal Services Business of the Year, La Belle Boutique. Beth Walker has joined me here this evening as one of our board members. The Entertainment Business of the Year, the Pigs Theater. The Building Owner of the Year, Liz Kujuf, who is the 337 First Avenue West. Best Business Organized Event, the first annual Albany Downtown Block Party, because of the way the fiscal year works, it was the first one. Building Renovation of the Year, Wine Crush, for creating such a lovely atmosphere. Good Neighbor Award, Margen Coffee Roasters, for aiding with Boz when they had to close for medical reasons for a while. New Business of the Year, the Brim Coffee Company, Volunteer of the Year, Steph Gutierrez, and Business of the Year, Ciberus Bistro. The last two will be moved forward, and we will be next week on Wednesday night to see whether they won statewide. So we have our contingent going up for that. Couple other highlights, our article, Meet the Neighbors, is on sweets and treats, so if you're looking for dessert, you know where to go. Savannah Sipping Society, the play at the Albany Civic Theater continues through the thirtieth. Our Volunteer Spotlight was on Melinda Martin. She has helped us with flags and in so many other ways. And our Downtown Cleanup is Sunday, October fifteenth, so if anybody wants to come out and give us a hand, we'd look forward to having you help us. And that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Director. Does anyone in the chambers like to address the council during business from the public? Very none, thank you. Next on the agenda, item ten is Award of Contracts. A, Exemption of Competitive Bidding for Cardiovascular and Metabolic Screening Services. Chief Harden or her representative, Captain?
Mayor, Counsel, good evening. Brad Lyles, Captain, Albany Police Department. The subject is regarding an exemption from competitive bidding regarding cardiovascular and metabolic screening services, and the staff recommends City Council acting as the local contract review board, adopt the attached resolution that will waive a competitive bid and adopt written findings and improve the use of special procurement method for the police chief to procure a cardiovascular and metabolic screening service through JSMD Sigma, otherwise known as Sigma Tactical Wellness, a group that we used in 2021. And also authorize the chief to negotiate award and execute the class special procurement contracts for cardiovascular and metabolic screening services over six years to, from Sigma, which is Kempner, Texas. And I think that was provided, the information was provided on the seventh of September for you to review if you have any questions regarding that.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the captain? Counsel Ramonigui?
What are your expected cost savings for this?
That's a good question, because when you're dealing with cardiovascular disease, you're preparing for the health of your future and trying to identify those needs in our men and women in law enforcement, rather than having someone go to the hospital for a coronary, or for a heart attack, or for a diabetic event. This is really to identify those needs before they become medical events costing a significant amount of money relating to their employment. So this particular group, Sigma Tactical, really works with first responders, especially law enforcement, regarding our specific needs, whether it be sleep, nutrition, our cardiovascular markers, and, and so forth. And they come on site with those things to let us know in 2021, when they came, approximately eighty of our employees went through where they identified seven employees that were in need of immediate attention going forward, for them to get additional medical care through their own. But it identifies those things prior to these events occurring. That's, so to put a cost of savings on it, events cost thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're trying to identify those needs prior to an event occurring.
So to be clear, I think what I'm asking is not necessarily cost savings versus, like, this screening versus doing other screenings. What, what makes this?
It's a little more comprehensive screening, as well as what they identified regarding those things that are more particular in first responders.
Go design for first responders.
It really is, a comprehensive, comprehensive blood work. And I'm sorry, I'm not the medical person. Most of our employees went through a, sorry, the term is evasive to me right now. Calcium deposits within our blood, and I can't remember the medical term regarding it, and those required specific testing, as well as we were also put on machines to determine what that was like under, under an exercise load and where our target heart rates were and should be for our future exercise and how our nutrition plays into that. So it's not just, hey, go take a blood test, and we're gonna tell you what it is. It's also putting us in front of nutritionists and physical, physical fitness people that deal with, with our positions.
Okay, so let me make sure I, what I think I hear you saying is that the cost of going and getting all those specific tests individually elsewhere would be more than just having this specialized, comprehensive testing in-house.
And they could be more, and they're also not done all at one time. And those, you meet with those folks. So we go through a test, and then morning, we'll do, you can do blood, and then you'll meet with the nutritionist visually, and they'll evaluate what these things, what your results are, as well as your physical fitness and exercise and those type of things, target heart rates that individuals would need, versus you going to different care providers throughout, you know, you're making an appointment to do one, going to a lab, and then going back to a doctor two, three, four weeks later when you can get an appointment to get an evaluation. These are done on-site at our office with a team of people. I couldn't tell, I probably had to answer, better answer, I couldn't tell you what each of those appointments might cost you elsewhere, other than I could tell you what they cost me when I go have to have multiple appointments for a full physical.
Any other counselors thinking, are you good? You know, the counselors have anything? You have something?
How often are you doing a screening? Is it once a year, twice a year?
No, every other year. This will, so we didn't do it last year, and we'll do it, we're requesting to do it again this year with the same group. Also, to, they already have our data and the information so that they can continue that evaluation process where that data is not shareable if they just went to another provider, because that's information that they've already received and worked on.
Everybody good? Thank you. Counsel, go ahead, please, Counsel Smith.
On behalf of current and future heart patients, and in gratitude for the medical attention I received as a city employee years ago, I am sitting here and about to make a motion to adopt the resolution on page sixty.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Don't say a word. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you, go ahead and leave. I have a friend, a doctor friend, had told me, look up the word allostatic load, look up the statement allostatic load, and it talks about the long-term stress and how it affects you physiologically, this, I hate that word, physiologically. Anyway, it affects you physically over time. And so these folks are under pressure on it every time, so this is a great thing we're doing for them. Okay, next is the purchase of a Timco Model 600 Street Sweeper. Director Bailey, are your representative, can speak today? Director Bailey, or her representative?
Sorry, I was trying to work out a deal for a nutritionist.
We're negotiating, huh?
I was wrapped up in the benefits of a comprehensive health screen. Okay, so this item is for the purchase of a standard street sweeper. Okay, so this item is for the purchase of a standard street sweeper, replacing our sweeper that was tragically lost in an accident. Fortunately, the operator is, is, well, he's injured, but he's still with us. Thank goodness. So there was some confusion because we also have another item that is to purchase an electric street sweeper. This item is for a diesel sweeper. So the plan all along was to have our regular diesel sweeper, and then in this biennium, purchase a second diesel street sweeper. But then the grant came along for the electric vehicle, and we took that opportunity to apply for an electric sweeper instead of two diesel sweepers, to try to do a small part in carbon reduction and also offset some of those costs. The item tonight is for a standard diesel street sweeper, replacing the one that was damaged. We have the funding in the Equipment Replacement Fund, and combined with the insurance check from the wrecked sweeper, we have adequate money to purchase this item. It's just getting the procurement approval from you to purchase it through Sourcewell.
Counsel, I'm going to go Counselor Smith first, because you're always first.
Estimated delivery time?
Tomorrow.
Hey.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, then. Any other counselor have a comment?
Where are you hiding it? Where is it at?
Counsel, I'm going to go Counselor Newton.
So why didn't we go ahead and go with the, with an electric one for, and get two electric ones?
They're very expensive.
The electric ones?
Yes. So the only way we could afford an electric sweeper is through the grant program. They're, I'm not going to have the exact number, but probably 50% again as expensive as a diesel sweeper.
$600,000, then?
Yeah, it was really, really pricey.
Counselor Newton.
Insurance from the accident, is that covering the cost of this?
Yeah, so we, we've already gotten the check from the insurance company on the, on the wrecked sweeper.
Awesome, thank you.
So the wrecked sweeper's not salvageable at all?
Oh.
I don't, okay.
No.
All right, thank you. Counsel, you have a motion? You know the comments?
I'll move that we go ahead and purchase the Timco Model 600 Street Sweeper.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
But seriously, where is it hiding? It's going to be here tomorrow.
It's at the dealer.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
There's a dealership for street sweepers.
I think the council would love to see it when you get it. And an electric one.
I'll bring my two-year-old.
Yep. So before I, so before I do the adoption consent calendar, I forgot to ask if you wanted to be reappointed.
Sure. Oh, we had that conversation. Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda's item is a adoption of the consent calendar. Would the council like to make a motion or make any changes?
I move we adopt that consent calendar as written.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you. Motion passes. Award of Contract, that's part of the consent calendar, never mind. Number 12, Staff Reports, PRO, Pro Housing Grant Application. Anne Catlin.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. Anne Catlin, Community Development Department, good to see you guys back and to be back. We wanted to come to you with an opportunity before we invested a lot of time and held a public hearing to apply for funding through HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development, to help the Farmworker Housing Development Corporation secure and leverage grant funding, which is millions and millions of dollars, to actually construct a total of up to 162 units, including 150 multifamily or multi-dwelling unit apartments, and between 10 and 12 ownership homes over several phases in East Albany, where we have no housing that is affordable. So this grant, as you read in the memo, there's a really short turnaround time, and we thought, wow, if we can bring in some money to further along some of these projects that are percolating, what's out there? And this was really the only project that was far enough along, so we asked them if they were interested in us trying to pursue some funding for them, and they are. So we're requesting your support to, sort of a head nod, to move ahead with this grant application. We would hold a public hearing at the end of October, and we actually have to publish the application for two weeks prior, and then you would adopt a resolution to actually apply for the grant. But I wanted to say is that we're going to use these funds specifically for just one small piece of a very long, four-phase project, and that is to construct the Goldfish Farm Road Extension south of the Walmart, the neighborhood south of Walmart, all the way to Spicer. And that's a, it's a, not a collector, it's a, what's the high?
Artery.
What?
Artery.
Arterio, that's what I meant, yeah, sorry. I've been listening to others. Arterio, Arterio Street, which is, you know, our highest and most used street type, which is a little bit more expensive. Anyway, we think it's a win-win all the way around. There's some details we're still trying to figure out, but we just wanted to come to you first and didn't want to, like, pull the trigger on all this work and then have you guys maybe say, yeah, maybe not. So just sort of a head nod tonight would be great, and I can answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Anne?
Yes. And this, the extension process is already part and parcel of the East Albany Plan process?
Well, yeah, I mean, this extension is actually in our current TSP, from, you know, the 2010 TSP. It's a project, many of the, actually almost all the roads that were, anyway, there's a lot already in the TSP. This is one that's been planned and needed for a long time.
Thank you. Counselor McGee.
I just want to say, I met with you and Beth last weekend, to hear you are going after some money, please go after the money, okay? Follow it. Be resourceful, I appreciate that.
Good. So I guess we're telling you to do what you have to do.
Okay, we'll be back in October with some more information, and hopefully we'll get it. Thank you.
Thank you. So after being gone for almost, what, six weeks, this is our first business in the council for six weeks, so we share what you can, if you can, and, and I'm looking forward to, and since, I'll start with Commissioner, Counselor McGee.
I will let Stephanie talk about our visit at Lafayette Elementary School, but before she does that, I do want to say that South Haven Rescue Roundup is happening this weekend. This is a big event for them. They usually have hundreds of volunteers. Right now, they only have 10 volunteers. They're extremely thin-staffed, so if you are looking for a volunteer opportunity, it is on the 29th, which is Friday and Saturday, Friday and Saturday, so the 29th and the 30th. Friday from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and then Saturday from 7:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. And it's at the Albany Boys and Girls Club. They just need a lot of volunteers and a lot of help, so if you're interested or know someone would, would like to be interested, this is the time to do that. I am offering my class extra credit to go and help the, to have 100 people and not have, and to only have 10, that's pretty sad, so that's all I have.
Jackie, Counselor, Counselor Monogue.
I did have one thing. I had a constituent reach out to me concerned about the Marvin's Garden as we move into the rainy season. The concern is that there will be, you know, not, not enough coverage from the rain, and also elevation above the ground to, to not be sitting in the water. So I know that we're, we are already unfunded on this, this space, but I guess just a call to anybody who can help with preventing people from sleeping in the rain and water, that's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kopczynski?
Nothing at this point.
Counselor Smith?
I was keeping a list of all the things I was doing in the five weeks we were gone, and I stopped after a week, and so it was five weeks off, but I was busy. I have nothing else as far as I know. Glad to be back.
And it's glad to have everyone back, so thank you for that. I have a few things. I had the honor of, I'm sorry, Counselor Newton, and I'm sorry, oh, Lord have mercy.
It's okay, it's okay. Long day, no doubt.
Counselor Newton, and then I'll go Counselor Nova.
Okay, as Dr. Counselor Remisia McGee alluded to, I'm saying that because she and I, we went to a second grade class, well, two second grade classes at Lafayette Elementary School, and we talked about what we do here on City Council. We talked about civic engagement. We talked about what leadership looks like, and we also talked about how all those second graders are actually our boss. And we got, and I have a little presentation because I'm a sucker for a good PowerPoint, so stay tuned. I have 41 very first letters to the council from all the second graders at Lafayette, and their darling, and the spelling is very creative, and there are some beautiful drawings. And I'm going to actually share my screen and show you guys a cute little, really short PowerPoint presentation that I just threw together right before this meeting. So this is the second grade feedback from Lafayette Elementary School. So the first question, so I created a little form fill letter for them to fill in, you know, saying, Dear Albany City Council, my name is blank, I am blank years old, my favorite thing about Albany is blank, and what I would like to change is blank. So first part of the question, what I like about Albany, overwhelmingly, the kids talked about parks. They also talked about how much they love going to their school, and they also talked about how they were proud that Albany is their home. So what they like about the parks, so we have a parks in general, going to the park, playgrounds, there were park activities, you know, beanbag, riding their bikes, there was going to the dog park. You know, a little over 10% respondents really enjoyed the cool pool, and several kids also said they really love going fishing, which I think is fun. And what I was excited to hear about is what they want to change. This is the future of Albany, right? We have a whole bunch of seven and eight-year-olds, and they are opinionated. So what I want to see change? Parks. Here we go. Our library, and there were a few more, more serious ones, and I'll, I'll say, what one person did say, they, when they found out that we can make rules, they decided they would like us to make a rule that all dogs in Albany wear top hats and bow ties. There was, there was one very somber that said they want us to make cancer illegal and, and people being mean illegal. So that was kind of heartbreaking, but, you know, maybe we can get a motion for dogs in top hats and bow ties, you know? And then in regards to what they wanted to share about parks, a lot of kids talked about how they want to play outside when it still rains, and when it's too sunny, and they want a covered playground. They want, so at Lafayette, a lot of these kids said they'd like free classes at the parks and free activities to do. A lot of them said better playgrounds, and there was actually a child that said that they, their parents will drive to a different area of town because some areas have better playgrounds that are better maintained and cleaner, and that kind of broke my heart a little bit. A few kids said they want more, more flowers at the park. A few said they want more art or statues at parks. Some said we need more dog park, and the splash pad, water, water park, they wanted more of that. I'm excited to, I'm excited to tell them, you know, we're going to have a splash pad here pretty soon, invite them all to the ribbon cutting. But, yeah, so just threw a little something together for you guys, and it was so much fun. We, we were supposed to be there for 15 minutes, but we were there for an hour, and we had a blast. And thank you so much to Matt for helping hook me up with a whole bunch of City of Albany swag. The foam balls were a huge hit, they were a huge hit, and the pencils and water bottles, those kids absolutely loved them. So thank you all.
Well done. Good job.
It was so much fun.
It was fun.
We're, we're going to go to Sunrise next month. That's where we're heading.
I have an ask for you when we get done.
We're on tour.
Well, good, because I was.
We're on tour at the elementary school, so.
Well, good, Counselor Novak.
Thank you kindly.
Are you done?
Yeah, that was a great presentation, and it made me remember that I did my block teaching at Lafayette with an award-winning teacher, Charlene Kaiser. I have good memories of Lafayette. Thank you for bringing some of them back. I have done this personally, but I want to say publicly how much I appreciate the time that our mayor gave us for a break. It did me a lot of good. I, I wanted to do more council-related, I wanted to review the manual, I'll confess, I, it didn't happen. I've had too much on my plate, but it's on my list of things to do. It will still happen, it will, and I just wanted to publicly thank you again for that time. And I also know that, this mic is on the wrong side, it's not only council that enjoyed the break, I ran into multiple staff members over the five weeks that we were resting, and everybody was so excited at the extra time and not having to prepare reports and do things like that. So I just want to say, I think it was an all-around brilliant idea, and I thank you publicly with all my heart. I believe on behalf of us all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. I worked the whole time, so, so I don't know if you know this, that Samaritan and United Healthcare split up. Well, I'm an insurance broker, so it was a lot of work, laying fears, answering questions, meeting with CEOs of both corporations, because I have a lot of clients with, with United Healthcare, which I'm in the process of having to move over 900 to other carriers. So that's my problem dealing with it. But the time off was great. I spent Sunrise Elementary School, all three third-grade classes, they were fantastic. And whenever I go to the schools, I try to go in the morning, because nothing, even Samaritan and United Healthcare could mess up that kind of start of a day. So it was wonderful being with the teachers there. I spent three hours parked on I-5. My car mechanic failed to connect the mass flow sensor, and so I was parked at the merge from commercial onto I-5, that little trangga right there, three hours. Every, every tow truck was busy, so they rescued me, a state trooper actually rescued me by pushing me off the freeway onto the side of the road, so I appreciate him. And we had, Psycho Oregon had its last classic ride here in town, and I will tell you what, I gave the welcome speech, and they gave me a mic for 15 minutes. I didn't use the whole 15 minutes, but I did welcome them to Albany and let them know how great Albany is. And after I spoke, Rebecca Bond and I were waiting for the director, Steve, become Cowboy, to finish his speech, and he comes back up and says, oh, by the way, we don't have chocolate milk at the end of the ride. The place went bonkers. People were upset, there was cursing, there was yelling, there was really a lot of boos. And so as, we asked the activities director, Anne Marie, what is that about? She said, for all 33 years, they've been having, or something like that at the end of the race, for over 20 years, had milk at the end of the race, chocolate milk. So I said, let's see if we can fix this. I called stores, I called dairies, to schools get the priority of the milk, which is supposed to be. The next, the two mornings later, I run into, at the 9/11 ceremony, the first person I see getting out of my car was Representative Volstart Davis, Shelley Davis, Shelley Volstart Davis. And it was wonderful, because we talked, chatted, and I said, she goes, does anybody can help you with? Yes. I need milk, I need chocolate milk. She took her phone, she texted someone, lady, they spoke on the phone. The next Saturday morning, we had 1,100 cartons of chocolate milk for those riders. It was an amazing experience. Dr. McGee was there, who else came out? Well, nobody else here, but we had volunteers from the staff, the park staff was fantastic, and we received a lot of praise for the park staff, and Director LeDane's team was amazing for them, and they really appreciated all the volunteers. So that was one thing that was wonderful. And I'm still getting text messages, and I want to thank Matt Harrington for rolling out the If I Were a Mayor contest information, the kids at Lafayette. I'm getting calls from teachers already, matter of fact, Tangent has asked me to come and present that, to kind of force their mayor to do the contest, so I'm going to meet with Mayor Lowell out there and roll out the process out there. I did attend their, for first in 12 or 13 years, their Harvest Festival Parade, never ever ride in a fire truck without their plugs. Oh, my God. But it was a fantastic experiment, experience, and I encourage you all to participate next year. They're our neighbors. I met with Kimberly Hughes from the Circuit Court, Lynn County Circuit Court. She has, she educated me on the drug court program. I did not know it was that complicated or that extreme, but I tell you, she's helped a lot of people, and she's looking for volunteer opportunities for people participating in the program. the program. So, I heard a lot about volunteers, so I will send her an email about the safe haven, and get those folks in the program to participate in that. And then, we hired a judge. So, well done, staff. Holly did a wonderful job putting great candidates in front of us, but I'm really happy that we got a chance to hire a judge. And I know there's processes going on, and the city manager, I take my hats off to you for finding a great group of candidates. And I'm done, and I will turn it now over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And it has been a good break, and a long meeting this evening, so it'll be a short couple of items here. The lady, Teresa Boland, that came to talk to you about her pigs, she faces having those pigs removed because the Albany code allows the keeping of pigs up to the age of seven months. And that's to allow four-H kids to raise their, their pigs for their projects. So, in conversation with her, I mentioned that the, really, the only recourse is if the council is willing to change that, that particular ordinance. So, if you would like, Chris Chendell can, he's, he's already done a little bit of work a couple of years ago, but he can look a little further into that, and we can bring back some background information and perhaps a recommendation if the council would like that.
That sounds great.
I think so, yes.
Okay. It, it has been a long meeting, but you're not done yet. We have an executive session, and then we have a very short ARA meeting. So, just in this couple of seconds here, I'll just tell you that I'll be out of the office for about two weeks, the next two weeks. Chris Bailey will be acting city manager. I'll be at the ICMA conference for the first five days, and then at my nephew's wedding in California. And Marilyn Smith sent out a notification to you all, which I received, and many of you may have, and that's about the League of Women Voters session tomorrow evening at the Benton County Library on the Coffin Butte landfill, in case you're interested. And that's at seven o'clock tomorrow evening. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I do plan on attending that, since North Albany is in Benton County, so we should probably be represented there. No, no specific reason, I'm just letting you know. Now, we're gonna recess to executive session to discuss the litigation, or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192-660 subsection 2 subsection H. Oh.
Could we get a bio break?
But bio break, come back at ten after, no, fifteen after. I'm sorry.
Next meeting dates Monday October 2nd 2023 at 4pm ARA meeting. Wednesday October 4th at 5:15 ARA meeting tentative. And Monday October 9th would be at 4pm would be a work session. And Wednesday October 11th will be our next council meeting, next opportunity to discuss this insanity. I now adjourn the meeting. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. What's happening? No, I got food.
This is stuff to give back to Allison. She's gonna put it up, she's gonna get it into the archives or... We're still, we're still...
Thank you for my mic. Did you move my mic back? Was that you? I thought you did it, yeah. It was on the wrong side. Someone put it back where I like it. So I can't reach you.
Computer.
Computer.
Yeah, yeah. So your leisure.